We have minutes from the last two meetings. Thank you, Bill. Can I have a motion to approve each one? Or no, we'll just do both together?
Before we do that, I sent you an email. I was wondering if you might be able to make a note on those minutes that I could use myself for any discussions you'd like to make.
Yeah, I can do that.
All right, then we'll wait. We'll wait to approve them at the next meeting.
Sure.
All right?
Yep.
The order of events this evening, so everybody knows how I'm gonna run this agenda. We're gonna start with our old business, or continuing business, and that's the local room occupancy tax, excise tax. Then we're gonna do the dog park, and then we're gonna do the capital needs assessment for our affordable housing, and lastly, section 19. Mayor Communication, anything other than those items you'd like to report, Mayor?
No.
Public speak. I will open the floor to the public as we get to each agenda item. But if there's someone who wants to speak to something other than these agenda items, now's your time. Okay. Crest to consider adoption of chapter 64G, section 3A, local room excise tax. Hey, Joe. Here. Um, I'm assuming, I just have a couple of questions, Mayor.
Yes.
This is a tax that will tax any, like Fed and Breakfast, Airbnb, things that happen in town?
Short-term rentals, and that kind of target apps as Airbnb, there's another major, like home away from home vacation. So you're looking for folks who are renting space in their home more than occasionally, maybe as a side business, and putting a tax on that because, you know, you want a number of days where there's really a clear impact on the infrastructure close to another building unit.
How many days requires, is there a limit on the days? I mean, you're saying...
It's 15.
So if there, if someone is renting out their home for just two days, that doesn't get taxed?
No, it doesn't.
So it has to be 15 days or more?
In a given year.
In a given year, but I would also say...
Oh, in a year?
Yeah, but I would also just, just say that, that I think it, I mean, it'll be a public hearing, but I think there's a conversation we had about the number of days. It has to be? It's in state law.
15 days per year, the state law?
I don't know what it is in the state law. Whatever the exemption is, it's in the state law.
Okay. Is there regulations, Health Department regulations, that cover these short-term rentals?
Not that we have right now.
Do we need them?
I'm not sure. I would defer to the health agent. I mean, this is just for an acceptance of the local tax, and to go forward with that, but I'm not, I've not talked to our health agent about it.
I don't know, I link the two, but maybe I'm wrong. I think if we're going to tax these short-term rentals, whatever, they ought to follow the same regulations that everybody is following for hotels and things, I guess, but I don't know. I'm just asking, because this is a new thing.
I honestly not given that piece of the thought.
You ought to thought I might interject into that, Mayor. Is, does the city have any responsibility for assuring any quality or standards of habitability if we're collecting a tax on the usage of property? So I think the question...
That's what I'm, that's...
The Board of Health is kind of good information to have. I would hope that we would have no responsibility, and just be able to collect the tax, and nobody else to be able to collect, and help the city coffers, but I just wanted to be sure we don't have any obligations.
I mean, certainly you can check that, but I feel that the tax is not about suitability or habitability of any one property, because that would be covered by existing health regulations.
Other regulations.
However, I do see the local tax specific to the use of junk public infrastructure, roads, sewer water, and not to the quality of a room or not.
Not necessarily quality, but the habitability.
Yeah, I mean, habitability comes under...
It's substandard in some way, and the city's approved it, and they're collecting taxes.
We're not the approving people, yeah. And you're, I mean, no, we're not.
No, I understand we're not. We're approving it, and to be aware of the collecting...
We collect property taxes just to play devil's advocate on all property, and some of it is uninhabitable for years before we actually stop collecting taxes.
Okay, good point, very good point. All right, that's all my questions. I don't see any problem with this. How about you guys? If you, Joe or Owen, you're councilors, you're voting on this, you're welcome to ask questions. This is the local occupancy tax. You didn't know you were councilors, did you? I just...
Thank you.
Any questions, though?
No, I think it's, you know, people are running a business out of their house, just like anybody else, any other business, I think it's warrants tax than the mayor's point of using utilities and extra wear and tear on the infrastructure, I think is a good point too, that we should take into consideration. I hadn't even thought of that.
Is that, I don't think it is, but is the tax supposed to be dedicated to infrastructure, or is that your, I think, general fault?
It's a local option tax, like all of the other...
It just goes to the general fund, right?
Similar to Neil's tax. What you're actually adopting is hotel motel tax. Hotel motel tax has been expanded to include short-term rentals. So because we don't have any hotel motels here, if a hotel motel was to move in tomorrow, this is the hotel motel local tax option, which also includes short-term rentals.
One isn't on top of the other, unless you're a hotel motel.
If you're a hotel motel, they're already doing this.
Right.
So because we've never adopted this, because we have no hotel motels...
Chuck? Well, I would like a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Three to zero. The Z dog park. As chairman of the CPA, I can report that we unanimously approve this. This is seed money. Jeff will explain it here, and Owen is here also. This money will allow the planning department to seek consultation on siting of the dog park and its facility. And you can expand on that. And the CPA felt this is similar to what we've done with a lot of CPA grants in trying to get information so that you can have a design to go out and get other grants, knowing what the final cost is. We're gonna get a cost estimate as well, all right? It doesn't involve land procurement, correct, Jeff? There's no land cost in this.
This does not call for any land procurement.
Did I, did I say that right, Jeff?
We would be utilizing existing land. The purpose of the study is to find out which municipal site is most appropriate for the dog park. Please feel free to jump in.
Thank you, this is good. I think, to preface it, there's a foundation called the Stanton Foundation, which is giving municipalities grant funds to design dog parks as one component, and then a separate grant to construct them. So the Stanton Foundation is offering communities $25,000, up to $25,000 of design funds. And then, once a design is done, the community can go back to the Stanton Foundation for up to $250,000 towards the construction. So the, the issue, you know, the request for the CPA is for the city to do some reconnaissance on some properties in advance of that. So that's the one sort of snag in this, is that to be eligible for the $25,000 design, you have to have a site, and you have to have a sketch drawing of it with an estimated construction cost. So that's the part where the CPA request would allow us to get to that point. And then what we're asking for is some additional funds to have the consultant help us look at a list of five or six city-owned properties, to assess them with basic assessment, look at the suitability, and try to get the community down to one preferred site. Then that would be the site we would apply for the design for. So, you know, it's something that's beyond the scope of the planning department in-house. So there are, there's a local firm who has worked with a bunch of municipalities in the lead-up to applying for a state grant, so that's the idea. The $9,000 would cover a review of five or six city-owned sites, basic drawings of them, you know, looking at some pography where a road and a parking area might go, and have a list of five or six, and then they would host a community meeting, talk about what those five or six look like. With that input, they might refine, or try to get down to one site and have a second community meeting on that chosen site. And then finally, they would come up with a sketch drawing and a construction estimate, which would then get us ready to apply for a grant. So I think that's the chair, so that's the seed funding part of it.
CPA is very, does this often, for most projects in which there is a targeted grant, but there is information or design or consultation needed ahead of time, CPA does this to allow for them. You want to say anything, Owen?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think one thing to clarify that's very important, especially for the public, and potentially some people here tonight, is that this is the earliest of early parts of the process. And we can't move forward with the grant process without evaluating city-owned properties, because again, there won't be any land acquisition involved here. We need to look at all potential available city-owned properties, any specific property. It doesn't mean that that's going to be the one that we're gonna land on. It's just as important to use this process to look at preliminary designs, not just to potentially rule in optimal properties, but potentially to look at ones that help rule out suboptimal properties. There's been some concern from the residents of the Treehouse area, the Button Road area, about their, a parcel of city-owned land that afflicts that community. We've received a petition from them. But it's important to remember that granting of these CPA funds does not mean that there will be a bulldozer at some store in the morning, and that in order to have an informed community discussion, we really need to look at all these plans and see what works best. We currently have a list of four properties. I think personally, we should, we should look to potentially expand those, and that could be done through a variety of means. And, you know, this project was brought to me by Chief Alberti and Sergeant Scribner in regards to the knowledge of the Stanton Foundation, and I know that this has been a topic that's been discussed by our residents for many years. I think that the potential to build a dog park will further add enrichment to our community, much like we have the boardwalk, we have the bike path. Is this a necessary thing? No, but neither are a lot of the amenities that make our city so wonderful. I think that it will be important, in order to discuss any of these properties, to actually see sketches and see how things will be laid out before we can really move forward with the community input. But it's really exciting, and I'm glad that, you know, for the most part, yes, it will take some CPA money, both for the preliminary designs and in all transparency for the final construction phase, if we ever get there. But the reality is that I think that will account for maybe 12% of the entire project cost. And so I think this is, this is great. I think this is exactly what CPA funds were intended for, and I'm excited to be a part of it.
I just want to interject that the CPA, in my view, its goals include quality-of-life projects. The boardwalk, the rail trail, the dog park includes the quality of life in East Hampton, preserving the community, which is why it's there. So that's why parks were included in the, as one of the tenants of the CPA. Anything from the councilors? Joe, Bill, JP?
Just to follow up on Councilor Zaret's comments, I think the discussion involves the Parks Department, and they have been involved in the process and had some discussions regarding potential oversight, should there not be a volunteer committee to be able to commit to the maintenance work that may be required, picking up any trash from the trash If there were an occasional moment, maintenance of signs, those kinds of things. So that kind of groundwork has been laid. The question in my mind is if we're missing some, for some reason, Jeff, the potential maintenance costs that might be there and not be covered by the grant, and the city should be cognizant of those expenses. I don't know if it would be appropriate to expand the report a bit, to kind of take a quick look at that, so we could really be informed before we apply for any further requests.
I think that discussion came up at CPA, so I think it's totally within the scope of the consultant's work to talk about how maintenance is handled in other communities. So there's seven, roughly seven municipalities in Massachusetts that have access and built dog parks through this program. So an assessment of how each community has handled that is within the scope. And then I know the other question that came up was, any questions about liability for those who access the park? So those are easy things, I think, for the consultant to add into the report at the end of that, before any further action is taken. So I think that makes sense. Councilor Zaret has, with others, made a lot of effort to raise public awareness, identify people who are committed to this in the long term. So I think once, if we can get to a place where there's a chosen site, then that's sort of the time to then start to look at all the other pieces of the puzzle.
I think it was brought up at the CPA meeting, because it was a member of the Park and Recommission here, Park Department can't take it on as a new park. So that kind of information, Councilor Krasinski is excellent in getting that information, maintenance, liability, these are the kinds of things that the consultant ought to bring forward, so that we make, as Owen said, an informed decision going forward. Because these costs have to be considered, not just in building the park, but what happens. And I imagine, since there's a lot of other parks out there, we can get some information from those cities and towns as to what they've dealt with, maintenance-wise, et cetera. Thank you. I would like that, I would agree, that should be part of the agenda. Anything else? Anybody else? Bill?
Yeah, I just got one thing. This, this $9,000 is just to get to where we need to be to apply for the grant, right? So if we don't get the grant, it all falls flat right there, then the nine grand was just to get parks up to speed to acceptable places or something.
I think there's two sides to that coin, which is, if we can't get, if we can't as a community get to a preferred site, then we may not really have had much success. But if it's, for some reason, we didn't get the grant, the grant seems to be on a yearly cycle, so we would reapply. I think, I think the likelihood of getting the grant seems pretty high, if we could get to the chosen, sort of like...
Usually those grants are leveraged by the CPA funds, and that's what the grant people like. They like to see local community aid and investment, so they'll probably have. I think it's, we've been fairly successful getting grants.
We've been very successful. I just wanted to hear Jeff's. Very good. Which, it's been great.
Jeff's a Superman.
There's a lot of people, there's a lot of people who'll help.
The potential here is, is to leverage through the $9,000 and the study, and come down to a site and know the expenses, and then get the $25,000, and then the $250,000 grant, that's $275,000, leveraged from $9,000.
They're gonna want some CPA funds inside.
They, they don't ask for any, any other monies or funds on the grant, as I understand it, the last time I reviewed their website.
The construction day is required 10% probably CPA votes.
Yeah, well, that's only $25,000.
10%? No, 10%, yeah.
Only.
Correct.
Be careful, taxpayers are coming to shoot a lightning bolt through me.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, but again, it's a small, that's why I said, overall, it's a small percentage.
Well, considering a lot of, a lot of places, a lot of grants, they ask for, you know, matching grants.
Matching grants.
Well, I'm in favor of this, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Approve?
Approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is up for public hearing next council. I'm gonna move on. Am I gonna mispronounce your name?
Gianna.
Gianna.
Tetro, yes.
Tetro. Please hear from the Housing Authority. The CPA also approved...
Housing Partnership.
Housing Partnership, excuse me. What changed years ago.
Yeah.
But I'm, you know, it's been around too long, that's probably what a lot of people are saying. The CPA did approve this, also unanimously. Again, this is seed money to find out what capital improvements are necessary, and I fail to send you the CPA, I don't know if you guys got the CPA's request, which has the pictures of all the houses. Do you have it? Okay, great, all right. We have five homes, and there are various needs of repair. In order to, again, apply for grants for repair, we need to know from, I guess it's, I forget, an architect?
Yeah, we, the city would cut an RFP for a consultant.
Consultant who has, obviously will target what capital is needed. I'll let you finish.
Okay. Thank you for having us. So, right, this is to look at five properties in East Hampton that are currently owned or managed by SMOCK, which is the South Middlesex Opportunity Council. This includes the Town Lodging House, which is a city-owned property and has a historic preservation restriction on it, and it currently has an affordable housing need restriction. So this came up because the Housing Partnership has been looking and interested in the Town Lodging House for a while, because we are aware that there are some outstanding maintenance needs at the property that would improve the quality of life for the residents that live there. All five of these properties really serve some of our most vulnerable residents in East Hampton. Four of the properties that are owned by SMOCK are recovery-focused, so these are folks in some stage of recovery. They also serve a lot of folks who are coming out of the shelter system. This is sort of, that can be their next stop as they move on to more permanent housing. And so all of them are single-room occupancy units, which means that they often have shared bathrooms and shared kitchens. And we had originally approached SMOCK about looking at Town Lodging House, and then they kind of, we kind of broadened it to say, you know, what about looking at all five of the properties? Some of the properties have been rehabbed with CBPG funds, you know, maybe 15 years ago. So I don't think that all of the properties are in major need of repair, but I think what this does is it gives the city a picture, and SMOCK an idea of what are the things that could be, that could be improved. And then, of course, Jeff has stepped out of the room, but it then also gives us a list of other grants are coming up. City of East Hampton is a housing choice community, which gives us the opportunity to apply for other state grants, and so this would kind of give us a list of the things that the properties need. Currently, the Town Lodging House is counted on our subsidized housing inventory, which is the list that the state keeps of how many affordable housing units we have. The other units are not counted, but that's something that we would explore, you know, going forward, particularly if they needed additional support from CPA to, you know, do maintenance.
I think at the CPA meeting, it was brought up about the fact that SMOCK owns four of these.
Yes.
And this is CPA city money. Can you go detail how that's resolved?
So SMOCK owns four of the properties. They have their own maintenance team, so they do regular maintenance and upkeep like that. So if, so again, this is just a study to determine what the properties need. If we determine later that some of the properties that are owned by SMOCK need more capital needs, and we want to, they want to approach CPA for that, then we would need to enter into an affordable housing restriction.
That's right, the deed restrictions.
Right. So SMOCK is an agency out of Framingham, they do a lot of different affordable housing initiatives. For some reason, they are also operating at Western Mass, they go to Worcester, and I think the representative that was here at CPA, they go as far as Springfield. So they do have some interest in Western Mass. And they are an affordable housing entity, so they're not a for-profit agency. But if we did need CPA funds, or perhaps any other kind of grant funding from the state, they are very agreeable to then deed restricting these properties that maybe are not currently deed restricted, and that would also allow us to count some of those units on our subsidized housing inventory.
But the fact that CPA funds are used to do this study is not a problem, I don't think, with regard, Jeff, to the rules of the game, because four of the houses aren't owned by the city.
Right. Can we talk, yeah, so the...
We had to say a problem with the church, these people, right?
The CPA funds are going to the planning department to hire a consultant to do the evaluation, so the funds are not going to SMOCK. And I think that's where you distinguish between whether they're...
Okay, that's right. I couldn't remember.
...required to have a, you know, in the future, I think as Gianna said, if there's a project list, the budget, and a, you know, then there's a, there's a project, and they come and ask for CPA funds, that's when the CPA funds are applied to a project, that's when there would be the deed restriction, I guess, attached to the property owner or applicant at that point.
Value.
I just, some more clarity, and I'm new to this whole role here. What, what I hear is that the city, and so the SMOCK is, you said it's not for profit, but it's kind of like a managing firm, right? So they manage the properties, they oversee general maintenance and stuff like that. We're paying money to have them, have somebody come in and tell us what is an opportunity to be fixed, in essence, right? Missing that?
Right, we're hiring a consultant.
Right.
Who doesn't work at SMOCK, right, who would tell us for all five properties, what are the big needs, not like paint, but, you know, furnaces, roofs, and windows.
They would still own the property.
If it's clarifying, the Lodging House is a unique situation, so the city owns the building, but they're managing the operation of it.
The city owns it, and they're the property manager.
But the other buildings are under their ownership.
Own by them, yeah. So, so why, why would we pay a consultant to find out what's wrong with somebody else's property? What benefit is it of the city's, of the affordable housing care?
So, because I heard, I heard you mentioned the housing choice, so there was a grant opportunity recently for housing capital improvements. And we looked as far as we could for a project fund that's $250,000. We heard that the Lodging House had been identified, there were needs at the Town Lodging House, like the back porch was dilapidated, but we had no, you know, we had no, we had no professional evaluation of the building, we had no plans for that project, and we had no cost estimates for that project. So that, we kept turning to these projects that we knew that there might be some projects, but we're not prepared enough to apply for grant funding for that. So we missed, you know, the ability to apply those funds to a housing improvement project, a capital project. So that was really the impetus, you know, the Housing Partnership had been looking at this for quite some time, but then that was really the push to then set up the system where all of their properties have been inventoried, the work is identified with, you know, process and has patched, so then, you know, that funding source should come up again in 2021, where we would be much more prepared to actually implement a project.
Just to also say, Bill, there's a lot of affordable housing units that are privately owned but deed restricted. So the deed restriction comes into play should we decide to fix these homes. They become deed restricted and become affordable housing units, which add to our list, our inventory, that's the word I was looking for, which helps us with 40B projects, et cetera, that come in. So I'm a big proponent of affordable housing, and especially these particular, four of these are recovery-focused for women, male veterans, co-ed focused supportive permanent housing. These, these are important housing units that the city has, even though they're owned by somebody else, I'd love to see them become part of our housing inventory because of what they do for, for a lot of people.
I'm not taking away from what they do, I just am curious.
Curious, right.
Nobody's doing a estimate on my house to tell me what I can fix.
Yeah, Representative SMOCK...
Do you want to be an affordable housing unit?
Right, I mean, they're providing a unique housing opportunity in the city.
Absolutely, I get it.
And the Representative SMOCK, when he was at CPA, I mean, he said that they do the regular maintenance, but these bigger...
Roof repairs, something like that.
Roof repairs, the bigger ticket items that would actually give those units enough money.
Now they can write a grant for it because they have the money, or the proposal, I guess.
You want to speak, Mayor? You're allowed.
I would just lend strong support to this, this proposal, and one, the rooming house out on Oliver Street has come up over and over again, and, and we were very hopeful with Housing Choice Initiative and the capital asset...
And, and we were very hopeful with Housing Choice Initiative and the capital asset grant that, oh, this is great. This project's gonna fit right into that. And it did, except for, as they would look at an application, we didn't have enough information, like, we're not shovel-ready. And we, we went after those funds for, for something else. I would say another, um, compelling factor here is that in our master plan, in our housing plan, which is outdated, I know, there's a big focus on these populations, but this type of housing. And, and I think that that fulfills a vision and, and wish of the residents of East Hampton. And then third is, it's about jobs. You know, folks who are accessing this type of housing, um, have different modes of transportation or no modes of transportation. And given where these properties, especially the SMOCK ones, are located, you know, to go downtown and find employment and fill jobs that we really need filled. I mean, you know, you can see a help wanted sign on more than one business in our city or on Mass Live pretty readily. Um, and to make sure that we have a wide continuum of housing to get people under a, a great roof and solid feet in a great city and work here is, you know, is really an underpinning to a local economy. And I, I know I'm singing to the choir, Councilor Lynch, given, you know, PR occupation, but I would just kind of, for me, it's a nice full circle. So.
JP, you got a question?
I kind of agree with Councilor Lynch when it comes to making a distinction between municipally-owned properties and non-municipally-owned properties, about getting their initial inventory together about whether or not, what they need for capital improvements. I can certainly see where we would want to do a capital improvement plan for the Town Lodging House for two reasons, both in terms of affordable housing and historic preservation. That property and site had been used as, I think it's the oldest town lodging in the state, or if not the, then one of the very few. I don't think any really remain, maybe one or two across the entire. So that makes sense to me. I'm not sure I see the logic behind doing the work for someone else to come to us and ask for more money to repair their buildings. I don't, I don't know.
I, I can only say, Councilor Podolski, this is not precedent-setting. This is done all over the place. With CPA funds, nonprofit organizations, private real estate owners who have affordable housing units can apply for these kind of funds. And secondly, if they do come to, if this targets capital, as she said, we would get deed restrictions, which would maintain their affordable housing. They can't be repaired. This was, came up at the CPA meeting. They can't be repaired, and since they're repaired, sold for profit by the SMOCK organization. If we repair them, we're gonna have a deed restriction in place before we spend any money. But in order to get the grants to make those repairs and then to get the deed restrictions, it's a process where we have to have knowledge of what needs to be done. And it's been done elsewhere. I'm just saying, this isn't new. It's not, I can see your concern, but it's not precedent-setting. A lot of cities and towns who are in CPA members do this, so. And again, CPA was unanimous in its hope that this could happen.
Can I just say that the city of East Hampton isn't in the business of housing?
Not louder, louder.
The city of East Hampton isn't in the business of housing. And so the Town Lodging House is an anomaly. It's a, it's from a prior, prior era.
It's the last town owned.
And we don't, you know, this is, that's why someone else manages it. This is not something that we are equipped to provide. So to the extent that we can assist organizations that are willing to fulfill these, um, you know, missions of the city without us having to be the owner and ultimately responsible for the day-to-day operation of a housing, especially of the, um, the clientele that they're serving, there's a certain amount of social work that goes into that, those services. That these are, um, they are very transitional houses. And, um, you know, this is not what, what we do in East Hampton. So what we're trying to do is advocate for the people who can do the work well.
I agree.
Councilor, Mayor, you're not a councillor, yeah?
Do I get a vote on the council?
No, only in Northampton.
That, I know. No, I'm good.
But we're East Hampton, right?
Right. We are. We are.
We are.
In where we stand. And, and around just the investment in, in private property, uh, the partnership, uh, my office, Planning, Pioneer Valley CDC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, we've done a lot of outreach to developers of affordable housing. And to say, look at what we have and how wonderful this is. And because we are the size we are and the impediments or unique barrier to affordable housing in this current market, it has been very hard. We have gotten a lot of nice smiles as people say no to us. And we just got another one. And so to, to have stock like this in East Hampton and to work with a knowledgeable partner, it does. It's a twist of, um, you know, wait, why are we doing this? But then I also think of, our housing authority is at capacity. There aren't funds to enlarge that. Those are veterans. Those are seniors, and they have waiting lists. And, and there is an overlap with these particular units and those populations. And it's, it's quality housing stock, again, that goes, goes to job and quality of living keeps people in town if they want to stay there.
I'm sensitive to those arguments, and I appreciate, Melissa, your sharing.
Yeah.
I am sensitive. That deed restriction, Jeff, is good for how many years? When we would get the deed restriction? Should we do any capital improvements?
That's what I thought was good.
Is it perpetual or is it, is it 20 years?
I was just saying, it's like now, yeah, 100 years.
Right, okay, so it's-
Yeah, because when we did, um, Across the Street, it was 100 years, because they had changed them a little more.
100 years, yeah. So it's now-
Some of them are 30, right? Like, there are other ones that are 30.
The old ones, I think, are 30, and then the state decided that wasn't one of them. Another thing that I'll just add is this type of housing is really disappearing. So, you know, um, in my work life, I work at Community Action, and when I go to other meetings in places like Northampton, um, you know, SRO, these single-room occupancy units are really disappearing. Northampton has had several torn down and other units built in their place, but this type of housing really meets a very specific, very vulnerable population that isn't just gonna move into their own apartment necessarily. You know, all of these units come with supportive services and are coming with, you know, lots of case management. And so to the extent that East Hampton can be a leader and preserve these units and say, you know, we think these units are important and we want to keep them in our city, you know, I think it's a win-win for us.
I also want to add that I may be blind, but we don't have the homeless populations you see, say, in Greenfield, where they have tent cities on Tom Common. And that's because we have these lodging sites, especially for our veterans. We have to start helping our veterans all over this country, but at least in East Hampton. We have a place with Vikings Landing, where otherwise they may be on the street. So I'm, I'm a big affordable housing. It's one of the biggest things CPA does. And I couldn't wait to see what this was all about when I saw it. Bill, anything?
No.
Joe?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Again, this is up for public hearing. We're gonna get this done next Wednesday.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, why everybody else is here? Section 19.781, no. Mayor, you want to, oh, JP is meeting, so. And you have a, you have a property meeting about the dog park? I'll let everybody else leave. Think you might come up to the table, Jeff?
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. So, Mayor, um, you want to introduce this and then I think you want to delay discussion?
Um, yes. I mean, as I brought forward at, at City Council, just a, a consideration of, uh, adoption of section 19, certainly around the conversation of 21 and 22. Considering 19 and talking to the unions individually, the situation is fluid, and I just want to put the option on the table. I asked for, you know, the, the council to keep 21 and 22 as I put forward on the docket. And hope to get back with something determined, interesting.
You don't want to begin discussions on this yet?
I, I don't have a discussion to begin, quite honestly. You know, it's just begun and putting some stuff together.
I don't have to sort of, second what the mayor said, I mean, great, you know, thank you. Again, I think a lot of your, your influence is what got the group speaking. And it sounds to me like they're still speaking, and so-
They're still negotiating?
I, uh, really speaking, I mean, talking about issues. I just think we'd be, we'd be very, we should be very careful what we could say that the, and considering we're not a negotiating body, what we could say that could either be misinterpreted or incorrect. Until, I would think until the, the collective bargaining units or the city mayor says we're at an impasse, we should probably be quiet. This might just-
I think what Joe's getting at is that we react to what the mayor requests of us. We don't make the decisions on how negotiations will happen. That's under the mayor and the collective bargaining units. So we're not gonna get into detail on 19 until the mayor asks us to do so, because this is her request. However, you all came tonight. If you want to say anything, of course you should. Who wants to speak for the IAC? Alan.
So we, this is obviously new to us as well. It's just happened last week.
Last week.
So we did have a meeting today of our IAC to kind of go over some things. Since last week and today's meeting, there have been some individual meetings with the mayor and some unions. In discussion at our AI, IAC today, that actually is supposed, is actually not supposed to happen under 32B, section three. Any of the proposals, anything that would be presented to the unions, needs to come to the insurance advisory committee prior to that, for us to then hammer out, so to speak. And then, once it's, uh, once we figure that out with the mayor, then it can be proposed to the units. So, um, we are putting together just a formal letter just to advise the mayor. That's not done. We literally met today about five hours, four hours ago, uh, just to kind of advise that that's, we're hoping that you'll follow that, uh, that chapter and section. I do have a copy of that chapter and section if you'd like it. And that language is, is actually highlighted. But like we've said in the past, we're-
It's, I'm happy to take the document, but I'm not gonna, firstly, I'm not gonna get involved in that because that's between you and the mayor.
Okay.
That's the, the executive, the executive, the office of the administration to deal with bargaining with collective bargaining units. So we don't want to get involved. If we want to adopt section 19, or if the mayor puts that forward, we'll get into the details of why we're doing that. Part of it would be that there's an impasse, or in my hope, has always been, that negotiations are fruitful.
And, and I believe all of us on there, I see, as well as talking to the different union heads and, and feel that we could probably go up with something, we should be able to go up with something. There is actually, um, a procedure that was, that, um, I'll make sure I get the town right. Shootsberry, uh, Shootsberry actually came up with a procedure, uh, that has to do with this whole thing. And, uh, again, at some point we'll, we'll discuss it with the mayor. Hopefully we can probably follow the same procedure and come up with something and avoid having to have the council even have to deal with this. That would be our hope.
Okay. So we're just gonna table this until which time, I'm not even gonna bring it up at a finance meeting until which time the mayor requests us to do so. Right?
Yes, thank you.
Procedure, and of course you'll be known. Alright.
Is that the three sections, 19, 21, and 22? Cause you did it both on 22.
Well, we've already discussed a lot of 21 and 22, so we'll get into 19, which we haven't discussed, if the mayor asks.
Right. Can I even put a formal request around the making of, of, of any consideration?
So you're not, yeah, that's true. You just asked us-
I haven't asked for the actual adopt, right.
You didn't ask us to adopt it. You asked us to look at it.
Right, just, I wanted to put it on the table and say that I need to consider 19 and section 21 and 22.
Okay. Alright.
I have a question.
Yes, Nellie.
May I ask my question?
Yes. That's your question? May you ask the question?
No, I guess I have multiple. So my question is, will the council have a discussion on 19 at this finance subcommittee and vote or not vote before there's a full council vote on 21 and 22? Because this body has already approved to move forward with 21 and 22.
That's true, but let me say this. The mayor's brought up a good point. I believe we're not gonna discuss 19 until the mayor says, I am going to ask the council to adopt it. You're gonna have to put in a formal request to adopt it.
Understood.
So the fact that it's on the table, I probably erred in even bringing it up at finance because it's, she brought it for us to study, but not necessarily to ask us to adopt. With that in mind, I would wait until the mayor either says to move forward with it. If it's moved forward, that'll happen at a council meeting, in which case it'll be sent to our committee formally to adopt it. If that happens, then this body has to make a recommendation to the, well, we don't have to. We have to study it. We can, we can come to the council and say, we don't have a recommendation. But that's, it has to first come to us as a formal request to adopt, which isn't the case yet.
It's not.
So, this is good.
And so I guess the other part of my question was, will there be a vote on 21 and 22 before any, even if the mayor never asks you to consider adopting 19?
The mayor asked us to put that on hold and defer to the president, but I don't believe we need to vote on it until the mayor requests us to move forward with it. Agreed with that, Joe?
Yeah, that's right.
It's the mayor's request, and if the mayor decides to hold on to it, to request that the public hearing be continued. Right now, it's continued without a date, so it can be brought back with two weeks' notice. We have to give residents of you guys two weeks' notice. But that would be up to the mayor again. She has to say, can we have that public hearing? And number two, she has to say, I want to formally request adoption of 19 in addition to 21 and 22, which I assume will be the case, but I make it an assumption. So, that's how the procedure will work. Are you not agreeing with that?
I mean, I, I'm not an expert on your council procedure, which is why I'm inquiring. What I do know is that if, if 21 and 22 are adopted, 19 automatically comes along with that. The, um, the option of 19 on the table, my understanding is that you could adopt only 19 and not 21 and 22. And so I'm just wondering what the procedure, what the council procedure would be.
Again, because it's a mayor's request, we have to act based on her requests. And if the request is to adopt only 19 and she pulls 21 and 22 off the table, that's okay. We can do that too. So, we will wait for instructions, because it's, just like we just did appropriations. If the mayor came tonight and said, we want to pull this appropriation, we're not ready to proceed, we would wait, because it's the mayor's appropriation, things like that. In this case, it wasn't. It was the CPA, but I'm just using that as an example. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Alright, we'll get back to you. Mayor, you're all set?
Yeah.
Uh, have I been motioned to adjourn?
Yes, adjourn.
Okay.
In favor?
Okay. No, I'll look for Austin.
JP, I think it's seconded.
How could JP second it? He's not, he's not here.
But to adjourn.
Still says red. Should say green.